I'd like to call this March 4th work session to order. Before we get started, Mr. Pez is here with the talk about the garden. They have an appointment in Philadelphia, so I'm gonna bring them up first.
Good evening. I'm joined tonight by Michael Gorman and Joe Rakowski. We asked him to come up as well. I have four brief things to discuss with you, but I want to get the first one cleared first, so that Joe can leave. And that is, we're here to request permission to have a farmer's market on Mill Street, at the Mill Street Crossing area. It's something we've been wanting to do for a long time. It's something Mr. Rakowski has worked on for a long time. And I'm gonna defer to them right now. Why don't we start with, Michael Gorman has a map. He's gonna talk to us about where we propose the farmer's market will be located. And then Joe will be talking about the kinds of vendors. And then I'll come back and talk about the permission forms and all that. Okay? Michael?
Hello. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I just wanted to see, where do you think this would be the best place? I brought this as a point of reference. I don't want to cover up that pretty... For now, just, and then I'll take it down. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is it okay to come up?
Yeah.
So, I'll start by setting this up. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I can't blame it on the blonde anymore. So, I just wanted everybody to see the point of interest. As you know, this is the plan that was presented to council when we first did the Mill Street Crossing. So, I just brought it as a point of reference. We talked about the location for this, and we felt strongly that it was important to have it at the gateway of Bristol. Bristol, the Mill Street Crossing has become the gateway. It has the welcome friend. So, talking it over, with Joe's done a lot of research. I only went into a few meetings. And we thought we would do it there, rather than at the, down at the Wharf, only because we want this to be inviting for everyone to come. Initially, along this area and in front of the car detail shop, we're gonna have the vendors set up with tents. It'll be orchestrated, so it looks nice, and the signage and things like that, on the grass plot. We're initially talking about 12, and hoping that that grows. So, with further ado, I'll let Joe...
When will that be?
We're looking to start, Joe will address all that. I just really wanted to show the point of interest. Yes? Oh, thank you. We've made arrangements. The parking is gonna be on the Antonelli property that's across. We've contacted them. They've been very outgoing with us, saying, "We want you to use that for something." So, initially, we're gonna use that there for parking. Hopefully, it'll grow into something, maybe more permanent with the market. We don't know that. But that's where it'll be parked. And of course, the nights that this is gonna be held, which Joe will mention, the nights that we have this, there will be ample safety in crossing. And we thought with the lights that are there, the traffic lights, that it'll be a safer place to have it. Yes?
Actually, this will probably be for Mr. Salerno. But having somebody else be responsible for the parking, if we agree, say, "Yeah, we can use that spot." Something happens in that parking lot that...
We have raising the bar in both areas, is doing a rider, which Bill can describe. But we've already mentioned that we'll take full responsibility, like we did with other things. It'll be put on our insurance. Okay? Thank you.
A whole harmless form for both the parking and the borough. Everything we do, we have a whole harmless for the borough. But we'll do it for Mrs. Antonelli for the parking. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, for hearing us out on this tonight. I was here last March, discussed this briefly. The original idea was the Wharf, as Michael had mentioned. Just to get into details, 'cause I know you'll have a busy night tonight. The name of the market will, of course, again, be the historic Bristol Borough Farmer's Market. We want to make sure that we're promoting not only the borough, but also the people participating, that being Raising the Bar and Noble Earth as well. I've got many years' experience in helping run farmer's markets and events, not only throughout the tri-state, but also the west coast, for many years. It's something, a passion of mine, and it's a full volunteer effort for me. I'm not taking in any money whatsoever. Any cash flow from the vendors will be going towards the marketing, et cetera. We will be looking for sponsors. Again, be at the Mill Street Crossing. The hours we're looking at is Thursdays, from 5:00 to 7:30. Reason being, all these other farmers and vendors that are local to the area are already committed to a lot of weekend farmer's markets, including myself. We have Doylestown, there's Wrightstown, there's Yardley. The list goes on and on, outside of this area.
Joe, could you repeat that, the date and time, or the day and time?
We're looking for Thursdays, from 5:00 to 7:30, as the active market. We also need a little more lean weight time for the exception to load in, to load out. We're seeing up to 12 vendors. I have about six already signed up. As we get closer to the season, we're gonna have a better idea what the growing season's looking like. Last year was a little tough on the local farmers. This will run May through October. It's free to the public. We ask for all public participation. Right now, we do have organizations like the Teen Foundation, Bristol Borough Teen Foundation. Looking to help maybe, you know, with trash pickup, and helping escorting vendors to their proper locations. So, we want to get everyone involved as possible, make this a real community effort. There will be no ready-to-eat foods. We're not gonna have food trucks. Any hot foods available. We don't want to be competition to the local establishments that we already have. So, anything residing in there, we want everything to be organic and sustainable, and as local as possible. That's the importance. We want to also educate our community to understand why we're doing this and the importance of this. We're one of the last towns that don't have this, and it's time to get it going. Let's see. I think that's, we'll handle all trash. And, you know, besides just having the market itself, this is, again, an education aspect for us, the whole, not only Center for the Arts, or my establishment, but also, obviously, at the farmer's market, to help people realize the importance of organic sustainability, local, and all that good stuff. I think...
All locally grown.
All locally grown, yeah. We have direct farmers that will be selling their products. There will be no outside vendors, no stores selling other people's products. It will be their products grown, or made by them. And if there's any questions, I'm all about it.
Yeah. I know that the high school has a garden club. So, I think that would be a great idea. You know, the education part of it, they would go there to...
Hundred percent.
You know, to donate their time, and, you know, to learn more about it. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that's something that could segue out of just the farmer's market that's working. Not only that, but also the Creative Gardens down by the clock towers.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot of good outreach that we're looking for.
They may be interested in pulling their, you know, their stuff together.
Absolutely. We're open to all options. Absolutely.
So, if you have 12 different vendors, are we going to be talking about 12 different types of, you know, fruits and vegetables? Or is it just going to be whatever they grow, they're gonna bring it, so it'll be, you know, if four of them are peaches and...
I understand.
Yeah.
So, as with all farmer's markets, you're gonna have each farmer grows their own produce. We want to make sure not everyone has the exact same thing. But we're also looking to have up to 12. If we can get more in there, everyone kind of has their preference. We don't want it to be saturated with the same stuff, obviously.
Yeah, that's...
But we can't guarantee another vendor isn't gonna have the same greens, or, you know, the same fruits. But it all comes down to preference. But, yeah, it's not gonna be saturated with the same products. That's for certain.
Anybody else have any more questions for Joe?
No, I'm finished.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, buddy.
I'm sorry, Greg.
That's all right. I was just gonna say, when they're unloading, is there gonna be any traffic implications?
So, I know that we, I believe we requested four spots be reserved during that time for loading and unloading. I'll be personally handling that myself while I'm there. So, make sure there's a nice, easy in and out, so that we will have direct access to that area.
Four spots on Mill Street?
Yes.
Okay. And this is only gonna be limited to Thursdays?
Yes.
You're not looking to do First Fridays either?
No.
Okay.
Sorry to be busy with First Friday. Luckily.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Working with Joe, Joe is extremely knowledgeable about this stuff, and we're very comfortable with him carrying the ball. Michael is the event guy who knows where to put the things, and he'll be arranging the site itself. We've met with the manager. We fully understand there's a $300 fee for the application, for the event fee, which we are prepared to pay. Raising the Bar will pay that. We will also provide vouchers indicating that the borough is an additional insured, as well as Mrs. Antonelli is. So, I think we've touched all the bases. And yes, with the four parking spaces on the left-hand side, adjacent to Mill Street Crossing, we asked that we bag them for an hour or two beforehand, and let the people load and unload. And it's the time of day when, on that particular block, there's not as much action going on. So, it should be fine. Anything else about the farmer's market?
Oh, good luck. Great.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
I think it's something the town wants. And it's another thing, you know, with the spring coming, we just want to add to the buzz that a lot of positive things are happening in Bristol. We can keep rolling out new things, and things that young people looking for a town to live in are looking for. This is one of them. The second thing I want to talk to you about briefly is the mural program. We talked about it two months ago, and you guys gave us your tacit approval. Mr. Salerno is working on an ordinance, which we hope that you guys, what we'd like to do is be able to vote to advertise an ordinance this month, adopt the ordinance next month, and start painting in the early spring. Raising the Bar and the Center for the Arts will be the advisory role in working with the artists and trying to steer them towards the kind of things that we think would be beneficial for the town. We hope that the murals would take on either the history, diversity, culture, or natural resources of Bristol Boroughs. So, that's that one. And again, Mr. Salerno will have more to share with you on that as you move forward. Any questions about the mural program? And this is happening across the country. I told you before that it was written up in a Pennsylvania borough magazine. It's a popular thing. Just two quick announcements, then. We're having an art show at the Center for the Arts on March 6. I want to make it clear to the public, this is your gallery. We don't charge admission. We're gonna have live music. We're gonna have another mural artist painting a mural on the wall inside as the event is going on. We're gonna have a mosaic artist creating a mosaic in another part of the room. It's just gonna be a fun night. We have refreshments. It's free. Kids are welcome. High school students are welcome. So, we hope the public will come out for that. That's Wednesday, March 6, from 6:30 to 8:00. And then finally, on March 14, at the Center for the Arts, we're having our new business spotlight. We have indicated, we have identified the four newest businesses on Mill Street, and we're gonna recognize them. And they are IKEA, Japanese Fusion, Angelina's Bakery, Cindy's Cafe, and Khaleesi Dress Shop. What we're gonna do is have a panel discussion with them. Again, we're gonna have a reception. It's free, wine and cheese, and that kind of thing. And then we're gonna have a panel discussion with them to talk about what it's like to open a new business in town, what made them choose Bristol, what challenges do they face, and how can we, as a borough, and as a county, and as a community college, 'cause we're jointly sponsoring this with the community college, how we can assist them. So, that's another special event. So, I hope everyone will come out on March 6 and March 14.
What time is the 14th?
14th is 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
6:30 on the 6th, and 6 o'clock on the 14th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John McGrath here, from McGrath Homes, who would like to speak, and his son Kevin. John, you can go to that, one of you's are going to the podium, I guess.
Set it down, speaking?
You have two.
Oh, okay.
Want this one?
I thought you were gonna speak from here.
Oh. Guess we're all right now, right? Well, I want to thank you guys for having us here tonight. And, you know, I always love Bristol Borough. You guys have done a great job here over the years, especially in the last 10 years here. It's really, you know, one heck of a town. I don't know whether people know. When I got out of college, I was a basketball player, and I moved. I loved Bristol Borough, and I played softball. And my first house, I lived on Taff Street for five years when I got out of college. I always loved this town, and, you know, we did another project down there. And really excited about the one we were able to get. You know, it's a unique situation. We got a good partner. It's, you know, through the bankruptcy court, which everybody knows. But we brought some brochures here tonight, and wanted you to take a look at them. We have a nice cover page about Bristol on the front. And then that's a layout of the 73 townhouses, you know, which was always here before we got here. Then we have two models. We have the Rackliff and the Harriman. The Rackliff model's the first one. And on this particular model, we really went in and gutted the insides of these and opened up the floor plan, through the help of our marketing and Michael Gorman, who's been our tier designer for the last 20 years. And he did a great job. Just on word of mouth, and people seeing our phone number, the first weekend, we haven't done the advertising yet, but we took 11 deposits in the first five hours over there, the first day. But I credit it to, you know, we have a good team, from marketing to subcontractors and everything like that. The project was very difficult to start. There was a lot of hurdles with getting the gas and electric in there. You know, a little more difficult than I thought, but we got through it. The heavy lifting, I feel like, is done now. So, we got a nice entrance feature, which we have in now with Gilmore to review. And we're gonna do a nice entrance feature with irrigation, flowers. And we want that to look nice, you know. Like I said, we have a Rackliff and the Harriman. And the first model is the Rackliff. You'll see, the master bedroom is upstairs, and you can see it's a wide-open plan. I feel like we're unique in the building, 'cause we offer a lot of different options for people. We've been building a lot of 55 and over, and we cater to doing a lot of trim work, wainscoting. And we feel we have a good service department. I built that project next door 18 years ago, and so far, I haven't had anybody come over and throw a rock at me. So, we came back and fixed our house a little bit. But we have the, you know, the master bedroom upstairs in the first model. Three bedrooms, open floor plan, a lot of different options. And then the second one is the Harriman, which we all wanted to offer one with the master bedroom down. And we kept the two-story opening in the living room, kept that there. But you can also have that closed in if you want another bedroom, you know, another room or something up there. But, like I said, it's, I think a lot of yous came over and saw the homes already. They're decorating them like they're opened up, so... About it on the thing. And then you have the clubhouse, which I'll go over. We felt the project needed a clubhouse. And with the river, and this is the picture of the clubhouse. Do we have, are the clubhouse plans on there?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. We have a gathering room. We have a garden room. Exercise room. Couple offices. And kitchen. This isn't gonna be like health board approval. It's just, you know, you come in, you bring catering here, and have your events. It's really for the people to live there, you know. And then we have an outdoor covered patio. We designed it so that you have double doors. So, if they have the 100-year party in the community during the warm weather, they can open up these doors and go out onto the cover porch. And then we expect to do outside the covered patio, a big patio area with a barbecue, you know, tables, you know, umbrellas. In our community, people do, once they land, and, you know, the card players play cards, or play poker, knuckleball, and that's a big thing. Sure have a heck of a view of the river there. And it's gonna be right on the river. I think it's gonna be good for the community, you know. And that's about it on the, as far as, you know, the product. You know, we did, people know that we fought hard to get what we wanted to do there. We took off all the stone in the front, and put standing ceiling roofs on the porches, tin roofs, with a rail and a porch. I think it's, you know, really adds some value to what's going on over there. So, that's about it on that.
I just think that, with meeting with the bankruptcy attorney several times in the borough, along with, you know, Mr. Pez and Mrs. Collin, trying to get this project moving, because it's in their ward, and it was a major eyesore for them. I think that we always hoped that you would be the builder, since you're so familiar with that ground, and what was in the ground. So, I think it worked out. It's a plus for the borough. I know it's a project for you. Excuse me. But I really believe, after seeing the two model homes, and with Michael, I mean, I know he's been with you 20-some years.
Yeah.
But what he did in there is just absolutely gorgeous.
Yeah, he did a good job.
So, I think if somebody didn't see him, including council, you should really go visit them homes to see really how nice they are.
Yep.
I'm not surprised that you took 11 deposits in five hours.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, the word on the street is that they're, you know, they're fantastic, and they look really good. And I know you're gonna do a good job. That's what...
We try.
I have a question.
Sure.
There's certain people that have been asking me questions about it. And they said, you know, it sat there for a while. And that, was there damage in there? And what, how did you address that?
Oh, on the houses that were there, we opened up the drywall, and, you know, got the heat on now, and cleaned up any kind of mold that was in there and stuff.
I just, I wanted to clear that up.
Fixed all the windows, clogged, re-cooled everything.
Took down every house.
We inspected every inch of it. You know, anything that had any evidence of taking water, we cut it open and redid it.
Okay. I knew that it had, but I wanted you to say that here.
Yeah.
You know, so that people knew.
But we felt, I mean, we're comfortable with what we have there now, and what we've brought up to now. We certainly are, you know.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I have one question, and then I just wanted to make a comment as well. The proposed manor homes?
Oh, yeah. That, do everybody know where the seven lots are when you come in, the ones that were built already?
Yes.
On the site plan, they had the big five-story buildings behind those seven.
They're gonna be like condos. That was the original?
They were gonna be, yeah, and they were pretty long. They were eight-foot wide.
Right.
And we had the same product that we were seeing Joe's, and I thought, I was afraid if you built high here, these people would never get sunlight.
That's right.
So, our manor homes are only 50-foot long, and they're two-story. And it's, it's a smaller product. There's no garage.
Smaller than what's currently being built?
Yeah. But they're two bedrooms, two full baths, and they're really nice looking. Where we're seeing Joe's now, we actually, we're gonna build a model home over there. And we wanted to get, we have three different product areas. We have senior apartments, we have the manor home, and then we have the townhouse. And we wanted to do similar to what we did over there. But the manor homes, we sold right off the plan in 30 days, you know. I apologize.
That's all right. I just sold on the plan, and I just wanted to...
I have, do you have any... We have a few of them. We hand them out.
Thank you.
Yeah, 'cause originally, you know, the condos were planned there.
But I dropped them in a puddle on the way in. A few of them. So, I got about 10 left.
And then I just also wanted to add to it. I wanna, obviously, there's a long way to go, and we know how, you know, we've had to look at this project with some optimistic skepticism from the last couple of years, because of how many things have gone... I don't want to say the project itself has gone wrong, but the builder before you had a lot of problems, obviously. And we got question after question after question while that builder was building, and rightfully so, especially the people that live in the development that you originally built. So, I can tell you that they are very optimistic about what's going on there, and a lot happier now than they were even a couple of months ago. And again, I think when you took it over, the name's great, and the product, we know, is great. But I think people wanted to see things start to happen.
Sure.
And they certainly did start to happen.
Since that long, you know, you gotta develop the confidence on that. That's why we didn't want to give pricing or anything until we opened up the models.
Right.
You can say all you want, but until they touch and see it, and see what you're doing...
My wife and I are not on the market, but we went through on Sunday. So, now I have to convince her that we're not on the market, because she really, really liked the house, and so did I. They're beautiful, and it was fun to see a lot of people from the town, and other people that we didn't know, that were young and older, which is great, too.
Yeah.
And it's exciting. So, you know, I...
And we're gonna be back in for, we're gonna need some variances. And I might as well say it now. I know, you know, but we identified that early on. You guys, I know, that subdivision was, I think, what's that, 15, 18 years ago? And, you know, there was a few little setbacks. You know, we're gonna need some variances on some patios and decks, you know, stuff like that.
Well, all things being equal, you guys are doing a great job, and hopefully, we keep pushing ahead.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
What, I just wondered, what, there was a couple of people that came in. There was a gentleman I know that came in here a few years back, who had a deposit. What happens to those people?
What's his name?
Yeah. It's, that's, I hate to say that, but it's totally out of my hands. You know, we're working as the, you know, I control the job. I'm managing the site. But when it leaves bankruptcy, and it's in the trustees, it's, you know...
It's a different ballgame.
There's nothing I can do about that. Thanks.
Just to touch on what Tony just said. That was a main concern, meeting with the bankruptcy attorney. And my concern was, people lost a lot of money. He said to us that he feels, wants the bank gets their money.
Right.
Everybody else on the project should, and he's hoping.
Yeah.
Not guaranteed anything, but they should get most of their money back, if not all of their money back.
That's the goal, and I don't want to say that from my end.
Everything goes good, but that's what he said.
Yeah.
So, I mean, look, the bank's gonna take their money first, no matter what happens. But I think if the project's successful, and it's done quick, I think there will be money left, hopefully, to get some of these people and get their money.
That's the hope. And, you know, we're all on the same team here.
Right.
Me, the bankruptcy, is the way our deal's structured, you know.
But like you said, it doesn't have nothing to do with you. So, I don't want people to think that you're not giving them their money.
It's funny, when you deal with the bankruptcy, where I gotta be watching what I say. I can't, like, volunteer, like, you know, "We're gonna do this." I don't, you know. I'm the builder.
I just want, you know, Ralph, I think it might warrant, just pointing out that, you just hear the word bankruptcy. We might not want to assume everyone totally understands what we're talking about in that circumstance. I want to make it clear, the bankruptcy has nothing to do with you guys.
Right.
You guys are working with the bank to clean up the mess from before.
Right.
I just don't want that word to be continually thrown out there, and someone get confused and think it has something to do with you.
Right.
You guys are cleaning up after the builder, before you. And bankruptcy is not...
All we care about is the same that you guys care about.
Yeah.
The people buy the house, they get a clear title, and we get our warranty. they get it, they get a clear title and we get our warranty, we're gonna warrant the house, just like we do every other house.
Anybody else?
I just had a question, 'cause I think the original developer had, in the condos that he had, I think there were two stories or three stories, but they were.
It's five stories, yeah.
Five stories and the elevator would go in. So, so there were people that are my age, they're saying, hey, I'd like to be on one floor, that really sounds like a good thing, but that's not, that's no longer in the, in this development, right?
Five stories.
The one-story kind, I mean, one floor, not one story, one floor.
Phase two with the three, I'm gonna, I plan on, I have to come back in to amend the plan, we're doing, to do three-story, like maybe senior housing there, with an elevator, you know, of course.
And that would be in lieu of certain houses here, or?
No, that would be, it's actually not on this plan, it's.
It's over here.
Okay, all right.
There was six buildings, the big buildings, the five stories, there was one here, one here, one here. And I was trying to say, what's the best thing from marketing and land plan to maximize the need for what's going on here? And I just thought, well, first of all, I felt the need of the clubhouse.
Absolutely.
We were very successful in building these flats, there was a. A unit on the bottom and a unit on the second floor, yes, you have to, but there are, there's gonna be ten first-floor units and then ten second-floor units. There's no elevator on me. But the three big buildings over there, the three, three-story, I wanted to do an elevator.
Okay, so that's still a possibility.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I felt the senior would be, would complement this project, give an element of the seniors and do the three-story. And what I, listen, like the senior apartments over in, I have over at St. Joe's, I got a market study from a big company that does apartments, it was like a thirty thousand dollar study and they said, in the middle town in this area, your average age for the senior apartment's gonna be seventy-five. Now, St. Joe's is fifty-five and over. And the townhouses and the flats, it's been my youngest development ever, the average age is about sixty-two. When I did Flower Mills eighteen years ago, the average age was sixty-eight. So when the regular houses, it's actually coming down. And I couldn't believe it. I, I, the forty-eight apartments I have over at St. Joe's, I didn't market them, I didn't tell, I didn't put them out, out yet. We have a hundred and twenty people on a waiting list and the average age is like seventy-six.
Wow.
You know, which tells you, you know, because we're living longer, our age groups living longer and, because, and it's said in this study, because of the estate, they're, they're giving their money to their kids early, because the nursing home, they don't want the nursing home to get it. Instead of writing a report, you know, because they have five years to get rid of the money, you know, so it's a good thing, you know.
Oh, it's good.
Yeah. And I felt, if you build the seniors over there, you won't require that much parking and they won't, you know, there's not as many people per unit. We did the census over at Flower Mills, it's six hundred and twenty-five hundred seniors, fifty-five and over. I figured when I first built that, the average age was sixty-eight, but you can have kids there, they're eighteen, twenty, that's fine. We did the census and I thought it was gonna be like two point four per household, you know. It was one point seven, you know, it's actually less. And that's why I thought, you know, for the clubhouse and being, you know, it's gonna be less parking you need, because if you go to, a, a good place to look is the senior apartments over on Woodburn Road, it's been there for eighteen years. Heathergate, there's two hundred and three units there, and I bet you this, if you did a census there, it's about one point four, seriously. And remember, it's eighteen years old. The youngest person I talked to over there was about eighty, I'm serious, they've been there so long, they signed five-year leases and it's one of the only places that has, you know, everything that they need, you know, it has a, just has a clubhouse, it's not assisted living, they have a van there, twice a week they take them shopping wherever they need to go, but other than that, it's, you know, and I did a lot of studying on it before, you know, we came up with the idea. But they don't need, like, you know, like I said, that most of the people at Heathergate, they could have cars, but it's just, you're not gonna see a lot of traffic and a lot of, you're not gonna see cars, so it's a good thing for the township too.
Anybody else have any more questions for John, Kevin? Thank you guys for coming in.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna open up public participation. So, anybody wanna speak on this side of the room? I think there's only this. Anybody wanna speak on this side of the room? This side of the room, that ends public participation. All right, Chief, what do you have?
Uh, just real quick, go over a couple of things. For the month of February, based on Bucks County Communications, pro, proactive or reactive incidents, we had a one thousand seventy-six incidents, thirty-eight domestic disputes, thirty-one civil disputes, forty-two traffic accidents, six disorderly persons, and sixty-one traffic stops, even though it was cold, so guys getting out there still making the car stops. We had a robbery on February seventh at the Smoke Shop in Commerce Circle. Through our investigation, we identified a vehicle and a real good description on the party. Working with Ben Salem, Ben Salem actually got a robbery in progress and located, was able to identify the individual on the vehicle and he was taken into custody in Philadelphia. He was responsible for six armed robberies in the area throughout this lower end. Other than that, and then the good news is on February twenty-second at six forty-two AM, we had a DFIB save of a sixty-year, one-year-old male in the borough. Following by the next day at nine forty-four AM on February twenty-third, we saved a fifty-nine year-old male on the DFIB. So it just says to people who were here a couple of weeks ago how important it is to that fast response, getting there, starting the CPR and getting a DFIB on scene. And again, we have to thank the council for its support in having that, those capabilities in every one of our cars, so thank you for that.
That's all I have. Chief, you wanna, or the mayor wanna speak about number three items for consideration? Governor, Chief?
Senator Lebo.
Yes.
I apologize. Yes, Robert Lebo, who is a retired detective from Ben, excuse me, Bristol Township, who's also a borough resident, we're gonna be looking to fire him as a part-time police officer. No additional budget increase, but Bob brings an incredible skill set to us. Bob has a background in IT, cameras, and everything that we kinda really need, and I think it's gonna be a home run for us both progressively and financially, so we'd like to have the permission to bring him on board.
So we'll make that an agenda item for next week to be voted on. Okay, Betty, what do you have?
I know we're gonna do the community development block grant, block grants that we're looking into, and I just wanted to see if we could allocate anywhere from seventy to ninety thousand dollars to pave the West Railroad Avenue. It's like, people think it's an alley, but it's really a street and it's really bumpy back there, and we, I just would like to see us allocate some of that money so we can pave the street.
All right.
And other than that, I really don't have anything today.
So, since Betty touched on that, we're gonna be discussing the community block grant, we need a resolution, and we're applying for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for ADA curb ramps. We're going to, with Betty's request, apply for seventy to ninety thousand dollars to pave West Railroad Avenue. And we're also gonna put some money in for demolition of Elm Street. I don't know if that's possible, but we'll see how much money's available. Kurt, if you wanna touch on this, or the manager?
Hey, you pretty much summed up, what I have in my notes here is that those are the three targets that, you know, we've been looking into. We, we think that the Elm Avenue demolition fits a criteria. Obviously, the applications all go to the county and subject to their review and ultimately HUD's approval.
So our, I mean, if we're rating these, we're rating them ADA curb ramps first, the paving second, Elm Street third, or is it going as one block grant?
It'll, it'll go in as three separate applications and we try to put ourselves in the minds of what the county's goals are with this money that they collect annually, you know, it's federal money that.
Right.
The county gets and then the county selects from applications across the, across the municipalities. You know, we've been having some success with the curb ramps. I'll recall a year when they basically said they retired the curb ramps and, you know, we still got the next year's funding. So you, you just never know what they want to see. You know, they like leveraging money, they like infrastructure improvements, so I think we have very strong applications going in and how they rank them and which ones they approve or don't approve, we're not sure, it's an annual thing, so if they don't approve one that we really want next year, maybe we can pick it up in 2020.
All right, any questions about this community development money? All right, Kurt, you wanna talk about anything else while you're there, or?
Just real quick, the manager wanted us to give an update on the Maple Beach Bridge project. You'll recall that the borough was successful in securing over nine hundred thousand dollars in grant funds, about five hundred and seventy-two thousand from Pendott and three hundred and forty-three thousand was the county's open space money. So with that, the Maple Beach Bridge is scheduled to be replaced. It's going to be a limited access bridge to get back to the Maple Beach side, to the treatment plant side, and also for pedestrian access to get around the marsh to some of the natural lands or, you know, some of the nature conservancy lands that, that people like to, to visit. So where we are with that process now is we've done the survey, done the geotech engineering, and we are in the process of doing the design, and that includes an environmental clearance, which we have to get from the state. And we are hoping to have our permit applications to DEP in the Conservation District by next month, and we're then hoping that by end of the summer, we'll be out to bid with that project, so hopefully seeing a fall time construction project. Maybe, maybe by the end of the year, it'll be completed.
Great. Everybody knows where Kurt's talking about, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks, Kurt. All right, Tony, will you have anything?
Yeah, just wanna give a quick thanks to Sergeant Moores and Officer Charles Palmer for their assistance. I had a home fire last week at my house and they came up and helped me get some like personal effects out of, of the first floor and helped me out there, so I just wanna give them a, a, a big thanks. That's it.
Louie?
Hi, Mr.
Dave?
Good, thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, the only concern that I have is with Mr. Dillon. Mr. Dillon, before I go any further, do you have any of the paperwork I asked for, for the sewer?
Listen, the line here are the agendas and minutes and engineer reports, et cetera, et cetera. For February two thousand eighteen through January two thousand and two, twelve monthly packets there, and I believe Mr. Gerard gave you February's earlier.
Now, what Mr. Gerard gave was paperwork that had no bearing on what I was asking for. This is, this is more like what I'm looking for. Do you have the?
Gerard gave you was the authorities' packet for that month, so I don't know, I thought that's what you asked for.
No, what Mr. Gerard gave me was a breakdown on digestion and water flow and all kinda stuff that I had, something that was over, you know, what I, what I could understand, so that, I mean, I have, listen.
You asked for the packet, that's what's in the packet.
No, this is what I was looking for, so I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no other questions.
Great.
We had a meeting last week with the developers of the Mill Run project. It was, it was a productive meeting, I thought, just to make sure everyone understands what we were talking about. First and foremost, those of us in attendance made it very clear to the developers that we were not satisfied with where they were at this point in time, that the project itself is not where it's supposed to be and that from the looks of things, just the simple exterior look of things, it's not been a professional job so far. We made that abundantly clear to the developers. I will say this with confidence, the developers are good people, they're decent people that are not trying to hurt anybody and they are very embarrassed and they are very upset by this. They have lost millions of dollars themselves in this project. They are very confident, however, that this project can move forward. What seems to be the case, in my honest estimation, is that they have been steered wrong by their original contractors and that, that is seemingly in a transitional mode right now. We made it very clear to the new GC on the job that, that the first thing they needed to do was clean the project up. And it does appear as if they have at least started that process in a much more organized fashion than it had been before. There are some legitimate problems that they ran into that, that I don't think would've been controlled by a more professional contractor in the beginning, things like the building was sagging, as we've mentioned a number of times, and they had to replace with, with steel beams and that in and of itself cost a whole lot of money. That said, you know, they ripped out all the steel beam, or all the steel framing that was already in there. Little things like the way they disposed of that are unacceptable, and we made it very clear to them that that was also unacceptable. So they are on notice that we expect a lot of things to start happening soon, and first and foremost, they need to clean that site up. And they are also well aware that if that is not happening to our satisfaction in the near future, then we're gonna use any other tools we might have at our disposal to make them comply. Again, it was not contentious to the degree that I might make it sound, they are, I truly believe they're, they're good, decent people, they're business people, and again, I think they just had a bad streak of luck with the contractor that they originally chose, and they are actively moving toward another contractor. That said, they can be as good and decent as they want, but they need to get this project going in the right direction and they know that. I don't know if, you know, Ralph, if you wanna add anything to that, or Kurt?
I, I think that, you know, what you said about that, then, they re, they really are embarrassed. I mean, they said, we literally spent millions of dollars on work that they had to tear out and start over because the contractor that was there promised them things and then they ran into a structural issue and, so it's been a nightmare on their end. I think Rikes and Lorraine's main concern is that this site gets cleaned up as fast as possible and the exterior of the building starts looking presentable. They did say they were out to get prices on the stucco and the stone, but the contractor that they brought in again to this meeting, who they, was only with them for four days when we had the meeting a week ago, after everybody left except the owner, he said, he's promising me a lot of things, it's gonna happen in thirty days, we're gonna see what happens, and, and the suggestion everybody was, and even Kurt, if the guy don't produce, you gotta get rid of him. You just can't keep wasting money with people that are promising you things that don't produce. So, I mean, like Rikes said, is it frustrating on their end? Yeah. Is it frustrating on our end? Yeah. But in the long run, they lost a few million dollars already on this project. And they're trying to still get the two-story building open, they're hoping by September or by the end of the year. That's their goal, to get that two-story building completely ready for occupancy.
And I, you know, for as, as dire as I may have made it sound, I do wanna stress, they're in, they're not going anywhere, you know, they're already fully invested. I just think it's a matter of righting the ship at this point in time, and I think we'll do that, but we're gonna, you know, we were kinda playing with kids gloves to begin because we wanted to give them a little leeway to get themselves, get their feet under and get going, and we have a good relationship with them, we believe in them as people, but we gave them a little tough love and I think they, I think they accepted that.
I just wanna say something. I wasn't able to be at the meeting, I had a family situation, but I got a full report from Reagan and Roth. I just want people to be aware.
I ask a question, does, does any of this affect the LERTA status that they have? For, I know, I'm not sure how long it was, and it's, I know they're paying taxes now, right? They're still paying taxes and all that.
The, the titles in the RDA, when they take occupancy, whether it's partly or totally, then the taxes will kick in and the LERTA will kick in. The LERTA's for five years, so LERTA doesn't kick in until somebody occupies.
They have to take possession of it then?
Yeah, now, if they take, if they only do portion of it, then they're gonna start paying taxes on that portion of it.
Oh, okay.
But the, the LERTA hasn't kicked in yet because they haven't taken occupancy.
Got you.
And that's the way it works. We have to wait till the improvements are made, then it kicks in.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions on that project? Greg, you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, just one other thing, I see that Amanda sent a message to, Amanda, our engineer sent a message to Mr. Dillon about the bid for the curb ramps at Railroad and Wilson and Garfield and Wilson Avenue on Tuesday the fifth. Happy to hear that. The Garfield and Wilson spot is one I've been talking about a few times, it's just kinda awkward because all the curbs around it are done and that one isn't, so, hope to see that get done. That's all I have.
I would just like to thank the borough workers because our streets have been great throughout the storms and we really appreciate it. And that's all I have.
I got a few things. So we received a letter from the students from Commonwealth Eagan, and they wanna do a virtual tour of Bristol. It seems pretty interesting that they wanna come and film and do some, no cost to the borough, no expense to the borough, but they chose Bristol and, you know, they're gonna focus on things like the Waterfront Park, you know, Ratliff Street, the Grundy Museum, the Civil War Memorial, the Abe Lincoln Memorial, so the Riverside Theater. So I think it's pretty nice that, you know, these students from Commonwealth Eagan have chosen Bristol to come in town to film this and to, to put something on, so I don't know if this needs to be an agenda item.
I would just ask if the council, they don't have any objections, we just allow them to work with the. do work with them.
Everything will go through the manager, and maybe we can get Mr. Pezza, I know he's got enough on his plate, but maybe to meet with them and Mr. Salerno and Mr. Catroci to try to give them a little background on certain things. So if council doesn't have any issues with this, I'd like to have Jim tomorrow contact them to let them know that we welcome them to come in town and do whatever they want to do. Does anybody have any issues?
No.
Louis, so you'll be available, anything they need with Louis? And like I said, I know Bill has enough on his plate. I'm sure Michael, you'll help them on Mill Street or whatever they need.
Do you think maybe they'll come here and show the--
When they're done?
--product?
They said if we wanted them to come Monday night, they would show up and talk about it, but--
But I mean, the finished product?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be awesome.
Absolutely. The AJ Mirror Wall wants to come in May 4th, and they want to do a little extended this year, so they want to go from the 4th to the 13th. If nobody has any objections with that, I don't think that needs to be voted on, right?
No.
You could just give the manager, he could contact them tomorrow.
What month is that, Ralph?
It's May 4th to the 13th.
They're going to have tours involving St. Mark's and other schools, Philadelphia also. The Delaware Basin Commission is going to take a tour on the boat, as well as Friends of the Delaware Canal. That's one of the many tours that are going to happen.
That's great.
This is also helping out because Burlington's stock was damaged over the winter, and the Mirror Wall was scheduled to be over there after they were here, and Amy, the girl who runs the program there, is working with Ryan Sliger and Jim, and I know they were really thrilled that they could stay here an extra week. And it's worked out, it's helped Burlington out also, because there were some planned tours that Burlington has, and they'll just come over here and load up at our docks.
Okay. The other thing is, Solicitor's going to be advertising another ordinance pertaining to dogs that we spoke about last month. It was in your packet. Nobody has any issues with that. We'll be voting on that again Monday night to advertise that.
Well, I mean, if it's something that, I mean, there's an issue, is that it doesn't do anything to help the dog, to protect them. I could see if it was something where we give our animal control rights, the ability to go in and save a dog, but to have the idea that we're just going to give them the ability to give somebody a citation is not saving the dog, number one. And I don't like the idea, that's, to me, it's just too much power to, you know, somebody doesn't need, you have the ability to go and find somebody. I just, I just think that it's stupid.
All right.
I didn't want to--
The other thing is, there's a thing called the Tour of Honor. The Michael Dockerty statue down at the canal, the lagoon, has been chosen, one of seven in the state of Pennsylvania. This is like a thing that is for the entire country, and Pennsylvania had seven chosen, one was here in Bristol. So starting April 1st, and I think it ends in October, Jim?
November, right.
November?
October 31st.
All right. So you'll see people, you know, motorcycles pulling up, could be one guy, could be twenty people, could be fifty people, all hours of the day. They'll be stopping by, you know, not making a lot of noise. They go there, they do what they have to do, and they move on to another location. So again, it's really an honor to pick something in this town out of the entire state of Pennsylvania. We're one of seven locations that were picked. So, Tony?
Yeah, I heard you mentioned Abe Lincoln Memorial. Where's that?
The Abe Lincoln Memorial?
Yeah.
It's across from Borough Hall.
River Champs.
Oh, yeah?
There's a state monument on there, you know, explains Abraham Lincoln stopped there on his way--
I didn't know that.
School.
What? Did you? I didn't know that. I didn't know that.
Railway tracks.
Railway tracks, remember, just to walk the school, those railway tracks.
Now, on the Michael Dockerty statue, I remember last year Susan Taylor was in, and they talked about redoing the storyboards out there for the canal. Will that be done in time for that? I don't know what the--
I'll ask her. She's very much aware that it's in her hands.
Okay. I'm sure if she can get, you know, if it's possible, she'll get it, she'll get it done.
The other thing is, our bond rating has come back, and again, we have received an A-plus bond rating, which is really great to have an A-plus bond rating. I need to make some appointments to a committee that the Grundy Foundation has set up with the bank for the docks for maintenance and stuff like that. So it's one council person, two borough residents, and a member of the bank. So most likely, that my appointment will be Mr. Catroci, since he's involved with banking and stuff like that. He'd be the most logic person to, if he wants to serve on this committee, to deal with this. They're going to be making decisions on how this money is spent for maintenance or whatever as pertaining to docks. So it'll be one bank member, it'll be Mr. Catroci from council, and then Louis, I think you'll appoint two borough residents to serve with you. So that'll be your choice, whoever you want to pick to sit on this committee. And we talked about the community development block grant money. We talked about appointing Mr. Lebo at the part-time cop. Murals. Is anybody against a mural program?
No, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm not against them at all. I just want to know, like, before it's actually done--
Well, it's going to come to us.
Yeah, definitely.
What's going to happen is, I guess it's raising the bar--
Yeah.
--I don't know, the committee from the, I want to say, the Art Center will weed out all the applications, go through the project, and then finally at the end, I think it'll come to the borough for approval, or it'll never come in.
Back to the borough.
Yeah, we'll come with a recommendation from the, whoever the Art Center, to say whether they meet all the requirements.
And not that I have any doubt in what they're going to end up choosing to do, or where, or whom, I just want to be able to bring it to the residents.
Right. We'll have that.
Chief covered basically, same thing I was going to talk about. The only other thing that I have is that last year, I think we sent a letter or a resolution, I can't remember, in support of radar for local law enforcement. I got an email the other day from Senator Scavell from the state telling me that that law did not go through in session last year. So he's going to be bringing it back up. So at some point here, I'll probably come in and ask either that we send a letter or make a resolution to support radar usage in local municipalities. I think it would be something that would help us with the speeding that we, the challenges that we face, and there are certain things that are in there. I know people get concerned about, it's going to be a revenue generator. One of the things in there is a revenue count on the amount of money a municipality may keep from speeding tickets, which is 20% of their municipal budget. And there's some other things in there, too, also. So I would come back at some point, and we'll ask council for support. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, do you have anything?
I would just request council to adopt three resolutions this season for community development block grant applications for those three projects, because there is a deadline, and it requires paperwork required with the county. So these resolutions are needed. So I would request that council pass three resolutions authorizing the filing of these three application for funding, so we don't have to beat the deadline.
Anything else?
authorize the advertisement of the ordinance to protect the animals for the April meeting. So that would have to be advertised. I believe the police chief has reviewed the ordinance, and I believe he's satisfied with that ordinance. But, you know, at the April meeting, you can have a discussion and maybe make amendments to the ordinance, either by deleting or adding possibly. But I think the ordinance was in your packet, and it's requested that you authorize the advertising of the ordinance for consideration at your April meeting. And I would think the other point about a part-time police officer, so that the better--
Well, why don't we just, I mean, there's four things I'm looking at right now. Somebody wants to write them down. The appointment of Mr. Lebo as a part-time police officer, advertisement of the ordinance, the dog ordinance, the advertisement of the mural ordinance, and community development block grant, the three applications. I don't think there's anything else that--
Do we have to do something with the food court?
I think we just had to give them permission. I don't think anybody's against it. Do we have to vote on this guard, the food thing for Mill Street?
The survey.
Community guard on Mill Street?
Farmer's market.
You know, like, since they're using the borough property--
What does it say?
--community development block grant.
Vote on it?
Yeah.
Advertise mural?
So let's vote on also to allow them then to use our property for this. Anyways, does anybody have anything else? All right, so I'm going to, I need a motion to suspend the rules to add these four or five layers.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend.
Made a motion by-- Betty, seconded by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, so who wants to start?
I'd like to make a motion to hire Bob Lebo, yeah, Bob Lebo, as a part-time police officer.
I have a second. Seconded by Mr. Gerard. Questions or comments?
Now, this is all after he passes everything--
Yeah, physical--
--my background, a best of mission, just a psychological--
All those in favor, aye, close.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to advertise a mural program for approval of council.
Seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor, aye, close.
I see one, by the way, I just realized. I'd like to make a motion to advertise the ordinance that would call for additional protection for the care of animals.
Seconded by Mrs. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yes, I just have a comment going in there, that it's not really any additional protection of animals. It's only giving the ability for our animal control officers to cite somebody, that the dog still, if he is in bad condition, will continue that their way. So I'm not in agreement to, you know, to continue to create more bureaucracy without any substantial help to the animals. So I just wanted to make that clear.
I just--
No, go ahead.
All those in--
No, no, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to allow the raising, I believe it's raising the bar to use the borough property for the farmer's market.
Seconded by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
And I'd also like to make a motion for the three resolutions for the community development block grant, for the ADA curb, the ramps, for the demolition of Elm Street, and West Railroad Avenue paving.
Seconded by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those. Do you have anything else? Mr. Dillon?
No. No, the meeting Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done.
I don't want to ask, do you have any time?
Last month.
Last month.
Last month?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were. I don't know, you were the one rocking meeting.